Tell Carla, she sees me, we're good. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order. We'd like to welcome you to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners Special Call Meeting for this Monday, September the 14th at 6:00 PM. I'm Scott Elliott, Pitt County Manager, and I'd like to turn this meeting over to our Chairman, Mr. Melvin McLawhorn, who's sitting at the front to my left.
Again, welcome all of you here to this special call meeting. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk if she would call the room.
Yes, sir. Chairman McLawhorn?
Present.
Vice Chairman McLawhorn?
Here.
Commissioner Albright?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Nunley?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Could we get a motion here to excuse Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Second.
That's been moved into the proper second. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
On opposed, no. Thank you. At this time, we should have the invocation by Commissioner Ward and the prayers by Commissioner Albright. Please stand, please.
Gracious heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on us that this evening. We ask for your guidance and your support for this county and people throughout our nation. We are in hard times, but we know things are going to get better. Guide us tonight, your Lord, and make some plans that will enhance this county's growth and health. Amen.
I'll play the speech.
United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands. I worship God, and I worship him with liberty and justice for all.
And take a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, that will be with the exception of item number two, which has been withdrawn this evening. If that's acceptable to the board.
Do you restate that?
Item number two, Mr. Chairman, has been withdrawn from your agenda this evening by the applicant. So you'll just be hearing matters one, three, and four. If your motion to approve the agenda will include that revision and the second are agreed, then you may vote on that.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item two.
That's been moved into the proper second. Accept the agenda with the removal of item two. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
On opposed, no. As heaven. Now, we should have the public hearing beginning now with Bethel, North Carolina.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to unmask for a few minutes. Again, we have three items for your consideration tonight. The first one is a solar farm, which is located near Bethel. And we'll give you the details on that in just a minute. Remember, all these items that you're considering tonight, conditional use permits, and in turn, we're hopeful that we can get going. First up, these are quasi judicial hearings, so in turn, just a few guidelines that we'd like to announce. This will be for all three of these hearings tonight. We're here to establish facts, so those that are here, we're not necessarily here to gather opinions, but we're wanting to hear from people that have standing and/or are experts in some of the issues that are being heard. All the witnesses will be under oath tonight. And again, we're here to establish evidence about these different cases. There'll be a detailed recording. No ex parte communications, so if any of the commissioners have have received any information outside of here tonight, that needs to be divulged upfront. And written findings of fact are required, so after any action tonight, there will be formal findings of fact that will be issued. And decisions, of course, any appeals to our decisions tonight would go straight to Superior Court. So with that, if we could ask the clerk to swear in anyone that wishes to speak tonight. Do you want to do those separately tonight, Kimberly?
Mr. Rhodes, before we do that, can we have the county attorney give the comment about how we approach public support? Public comment period.
Certainly. We can read our public comment, and then after that, we can swear in affirm as a group. Mr. Rhodes, but Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters related to this public hearing this evening. Before you speak, please state your name and address before beginning your remarks. Remember that all comments are to be directed to the board and not to individuals. Please keep all comments respectful. Profanity or personal attacks will not be permitted. Pursuant to our board's rules of procedure, I'll keep your time at five minutes per speaker. Once you hear the timer indicate that your time is up, please conclude your remarks. Thank you. And then if it is time, those wishing to speak for this hearing, if you will stand at your seat, the clerk will affirm your testimony. Mr. Watts?
Got six people, one, two, three, four, five, six signed up. Is that everybody that wishes to speak on this topic? If you would raise your right hand. And after I read the affirmation, if you will just say, "I do." Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Is that your solemn affirmation? If you could just say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll first go through the staff report about this to kind of orient you as to where this project's located and some details about it. This request is for the Bethel NC Solar LLC for a conditional use permit, as we've already determined. This is a fairly large project, and several parcels, tax parcels, are involved with this. And I'll show you a map to kind of go through all these details in just a minute. What makes it even more interesting is that, in fact, this large project actually is straddled along the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the town of Bethel. So again, to orient you, this is NC 11 going northward towards the town of Bethel. Bethel right here, here's the core area and the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which also loops around toward Charlie Manning Road. The areas that you'll be considering tonight are right, just adjacent to portions of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Two parcels here, or two portions of two parcels here. Also, two additional ones down on the southern side. And you can see the different landowners that are involved in these parcels. So, a little bit different than what's in your package tonight. There have been some amendments or changes that weren't picked up. Remember, this particular project was given to you back in about March of this year. There have been a few tweaks to that during that time period. Just know the information that's on the screen tonight is correct. There are 317 acres that are actually included outside of the city or town ETJ of Bethel that is within the jurisdiction that you'll be considering tonight. That is about a third of the total acreage for this particular project. There was also, just to give you an idea, there had been a public meeting in Bethel earlier this year, back in January, and it was attended by about 20 people when they were first starting to roll out some of the information on this project. So, as we typically do, we wanted to give you an idea of what the zoning is in that area. And you can see, this is basically a sea of rural agricultural. Everyone there, except there's one small portion of general commercial right here along NC 11 north. Our land use plan similarly shows a small little area of general commercial here, right at the intersection of Highway 30 and NC 11. And then the remainder of it basically is rural agricultural as well. And just to give you an idea of what types of land uses are in the general vicinity, for the most part, a few scattered residential homes in this area. Few right in here, otherwise generally agricultural or forestry areas along that boundary. As you're aware, since we've had several solar farms looked at through the past few years, we have several sets of requirements in our zoning ordinance that go along with any development of these particular projects. 50-foot minimum setback from the property lines, and you'll see that in the site plan tonight. Also, 100-foot separation from any resident that might be adjacent to that property. For the inverters, and these are the large boxes that you typically see that go with this type of project, those, because they do have a noise factor of sorts, those have to be separated from a property line by 150 feet. Maximum height of 25 feet for any of the equipment on site. And other seminal requirements, again, we do have a site plan with us. Also, the drawings of the components, any of the equipment that's being installed on site, and copies of the lease agreements and solar easements. Again, this is a very detailed type project. You might recall when we put this information in our zoning ordinance a few years ago, a lot of communities really wanted to pay special attention to solar farms. In turn, we developed our set of regulations accordingly too. So there's a lot of other information that's required to go along with this particular project. So to give you an idea, this is the full extent of the entire project. So, a little bit better than 950 acres in total. And if you look real closely, you can see this jagged yellow line that is the ETJ boundary for the town of Bethel. So these areas here, these are all kind of indicative of the panels that will be put on site. These areas right here, and a couple of smaller areas down here are the areas within the county's planning jurisdiction. Again, about 942 acres there total. And that's with the shading on top, that is for the Bethel Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. And a few more details on this. There are, as we've mentioned, setback requirements from the property lines. There's also buffer requirements along these property lines as well. So in any case, if there's not existing vegetation that will be retained, there will be a requirement for a buffer yard or buffer strip to be installed there. Similarly, in the southern part, the same thing, we'll have 50-foot setback, as well as any of these areas will have to be buffered as well above those tracks. So as you typically consider these items, there are certain criteria that have to be considered. And you will deny the permit if it is concluded that the development is proposed at the hearing tonight and in its proposed location, more probably than not. So each one of these items need to be considered. Will it materially endanger the public health and safety? Planning staff has reviewed this. We've had a number of months to work with the developers, as well as people that have called in through the meeting as far as some of the discussion that was held earlier on too. So based on our regulations, we believe that the proposed use, in this case, will not produce any harmful emissions. It will be screened and buffered, as we've talked about, as required by our zoning ordinance, and will not materially endanger health or safety. Second criteria, will it substantially injure the value of adjacent or budding property? As we mentioned, with some of the existing land uses in the areas primarily agriculture, few residential uses in close proximity. Given those separations and some of the other requirements for screening, we do not believe it will injure those property values. Is it in harmony in the area? Again, based off some of the regulations that are imposed here, we believe that it will be. And finally, is it in conformity with the land use plan and other plans approved by the commissioners? We believe that it is. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we have two recommendations. These are our staff recommendations. Number one, to acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete and complies with all the regulations of the zoning ordinance. And also, number two, to approve the conditional use permit, subject to all the different standards of our zoning ordinance, along with a few other additional conditions. A revised site plan is needed. There were a few things that were omitted in the site plan that was received by staff. There are some existing blue line streams or areas that we feel like may require 50-foot buffers. Those either have to be exempted through a review by the state or our office, or in turn, the 50-foot buffers will be required. Also, the Department of Transportation is requiring driveway permits. So with that, Mr. Chair, we're ready for the public hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Now I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Clerk, do we have any people who signed up to speak at this time?
Mr. Chairman, we do have people lined up to speak. We're going to begin with Beth- Beth Tre- Trehos? Trehos, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Beth Trehos. I'm an attorney with Nelson Mullins. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Bethel 11 Solar LLC to request your approval of a conditional use permit for a solar farm, as your planning director ably described. You talked a little bit about the process. You probably are accustomed to quasi judicial hearings, but they're a little different than the typical legislative zoning hearings that you may be accustomed to. And they require that we all pretend like we're standing in a courtroom, even though we're here in an auditorium. And that may mean that you hear me object to something or come forward to see if I can ask questions of a witness. And so I beg your indulgence as we work through this somewhat complicated process. As your planning director indicated, we do have the obligation to prove to you with competent substantial and material evidence that all of the requirements under your ordinance have been met. And to that end, we have brought several experts with us here tonight. And I'm going to call them forward to speak with you individually. And after each completes their presentation, we would ask if you had any questions. To start is Linda Wadike, who has this PowerPoint presentation. She's going to introduce herself and give you a general overview of the project.
And I believe the county attorney will keep you apart on that.
Good evening as well, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Linda Wadike, and my address is 192 Raceway Drive in Marsville, North Carolina. I am the Director of Permitting at Sun Energy One, and also I deal with community relations. So I'll do a quick little presentation in regards to this. However, I must say, the planning director, Mr. Rose, have taken my thunder. He has done my presentation for me. But if you're not aware of Sun Energy One, Sun Energy One actually is one of the five top solar developers in the United States. We have been in the utility scale solar development for over a decade. We are your neighbors. We have an office right there on Bethel, NC 11, on the town of Bethel. So I want to actually talk about that a little bit. And that is one of our main offices there. In regards to this Bethel NC 11 solar project, as Mr. Rose has pointed out, these parcels are in the town of Bethel, and we're looking at this process here on Pitt County. This project will be about an 80 to 150 megawatt project. And in addition to that, we have six landowners for this project, which we have an option to lease with. For a project like this, to get started, there's a various analysis that needs to be done. From securing the land, all the way on to following interconnection with the utility company to make sure everything is kosher. From doing FERC analysis to getting your permit from the NCUC, which is a state permit. In addition to that, we have local jurisdictions that we have to follow, such as following with the town of Bethel and also Pitt County as well. And we are in the process of doing various environmental studies, from phase one to wetlands, from erosion control, and things of that nature. So later on, we will start with the building permit, and that's the final permit that is required for a site like this. To talk a little bit about the property, like Mr. Rose mentioned, the reds are the panels. And this purple line that you see here is actually the boundary. The blue lines in between are the fence lines for that. Additionally, we are putting vegetative buffer in different areas as well. As you can see, you will see vegetative buffer A around residential and major highways as well. And inverters are, I don't know if you can see, will be placed in between. It might not be very visible here, but it will be definitely meet the 150 feet setback from residential properties. This is our proposal for the vegetative buffers. For major highways and also for residential, we are proposing to put double rows of trees. The trees will be staggered, so you can't see in between them. And as planted, it would be a minimum of four foot in height, once planted. And other minor roadways, we're putting single rows of trees as well. This is a stigmatic of what the collector's station is. If you look at this site, of course, there'll be a collector's station upon the interconnection right here. So this is kind of showing exactly what that is, kind of looks like. And this is a typical racking, and the rack will be less than approximately nine feet, once fully tilted. So it's less than the 25-feet requirement from the county. As Mr. Rose mentioned, back in January, we held a committee meeting at the town of Bethel. There was approximately over 20 people in attendance at that meeting. In addition to that, back in March, we did hold a public hearing at the town of Bethel. And again, approximately 20 or more people were in attendance there. And we have been granted our permits for the town of Bethel. And we submitted our application back in March for Pitt County, but unfortunately, COVID happened, and we had, this application was delayed to now. As you probably know, there's various advantages for a solar facility to be built. There's no need for water, sewage, no increased demand on schools or government agencies or additional police requirement, like if you're building a house and things of that nature. Again, this facility is like temporary. Once the solar facility is built and decommissioned, it can be turned back into agricultural land as well. Again, there's various economical impact as well, from job increases, increased business margins. In addition to restaurants, local construction, companies, gas stations, hotels will benefit from this project being here. And there'll be increased tax revenue also. In addition to that, Sun Energy One also conducts educational for personnel's and training for personnel's who are not into solar, but they're laborers that need to work. So we'll provide the training needed for them to get the jobs with us, because we like to hire locally, once we're in that town. And any upgrades to be made by the utility is paid by the project itself as well. So since my five minutes is done, I will let, I will answer any questions needed. If anyone has one, I'll let Beth talk. Any questions? Thank you.
I'm going to ask Damon Biden-Cope to come forward. While he's making his way here, I will tell you that Damon is a MAI-certified appraiser, and he has prepared a report as a part of his review of this site. And your clerk has that report. And we would ask that his report, along with your staff PowerPoint presentation, Linda's PowerPoint presentation be included as a part of your report on this case.
Hello, Commissioners, members of the public. My name is Damon Biden-Cope. I'm a resident in Charlotte, North Carolina. The street address is 224 South Caswell Road. I'm an MAI, and I've been practicing in the real estate appraisal business for approximately 30 years. And I performed probably somewhere in excess of 10,000 different real estate appraisals over that time. I am an independent appraiser in that. I do not work with Sun Energy. In fact, this is the only task I've ever been involved with, with this particular company. I have appeared at some other hearings regarding the approval of solar farms. We conducted an impact analysis on this property. Often, there are very much concerns of value on adjoining and adjacent properties and what these projects will do. In the interest of brevity and things, the summary of my findings would be that from the research we conducted, that the proposed use would not endanger any public health and safety. We're unaware of any situation where that has been the case, and looking at probably 20, 30, 40 different solar farm installations across North Carolina. And it will not endanger any adjoining or adjacent properties. We've conducted many sales studies of properties that are adjacent to facilities, both when they're announced, when they're in the process of being built, and also when they're functioning. And we've not found any instances where there have been adverse value impacts as a result of the installation of these facilities. The issue often comes up of harmony and compatibility. And what makes a solar farm really a good neighbor for some uses is it doesn't provide traffic, it's peaceful, it's quiet at night. In fact, even the noise that was mentioned from the inverters is not even audible when you're at the boundary line of many of these facilities. So once people are used to them, they're very much a benign sort of activity that goes on. We've found no adverse instances from that. And I went ahead and I read the 2030 land use plan that was mentioned, and that staff had mentioned that it's in compliance with that. It appears that will place no burden on services within your community. And so we find that it's in conformity with that fairly low density of redevelopment that was planned for this area. That's just a summary of my findings. I'd be happy to answer any questions that are within my report that anyone might have. Mr. Chairman?
Then I would ask Mr. Chris Sandifer to come forward. And as Chris is making his way, I'll tell you that he is a North Carolina professional engineer, former employee of Duke Energy.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Chris Sandifer. I live at 3118 Green Road, Spring Oak, North Carolina. It's Nash County, a couple counties over. Like Beth just said, I did work for Duke for 30 years and was part of the interconnection for many of these projects on the utility side. I'm a licensed professional engineer in multiple states and in North Carolina. I'm a licensed electrical contractor in North Carolina with unlimited classification. I serve on the Nash County Planning Board, where we have approved 37 utility scale solar farms to date. And we find them to be very advantageous. And so I personally own about 100 acres that are under panels now. It's 15-megawatt farm. And so, and I could speak to what my neighbors tell me about them. They love them. And so, you know, it's like living next to lakes, what they tell me. These, this project is going to be very similar to what you've already approved. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail unless you have questions. Basically, I have the portable tank panels that are mounted on racks. These will track the sun. And the DC current out of these will go into an inverter, which transforms the DC current into an AC current, which is what we use here in this building. And then we have a transformer and a stage of transformers that actually match the voltage to the existing domestic energy line that's on that side. So there are no toxic chemicals, there are no, that make very little noise, that would be industrial. be in the extinguishable at the property line. It's a benign use of the land. The amount of tons of nitric oxides and the tons of sulfur oxides that would be normally put in the air with fossil fuel is avoided by using these panels. It's renewable, it helps stabilize rate base because they're entered a long-term contact. It's not going to fluctuate with prices of fuels, which are passed through for utility, those costs are. So I would just say, based on my experience, based on my training, without hesitation or equivocation, this project is installed, this plan would not materially endanger the health and safety of any resident of Pitt County. Answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, with that, we would submit to you that we have made a prima facie case in support of the conditional use permit and would ask that you please issue the permit. We would reserve the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses and/or provide rebuttal testimony if necessary.
The list of requests, we were just confirming whether they need to speak, and she said all of the rebuttal. So the first person we have is Beth, I'm sorry, L.A.
My name is Lawrence Watts, and I've been sitting back there, listening with every breath I could hear, listening to every word said, and I couldn't hear a single word, nor could I hear my name called to come to the podium. In view of my limitation in hearing, I'm going to ask that I be excused from making my speech. I think the information that I have is very useful to the county and to the county commissioners, but I don't want to make a speech and not be heard. And so I'm getting right on top of this microphone so everybody can hear exactly what I'm saying. I thank you very much, and I will ask to be excused, please.
The speakers, unless there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to come forward? I didn't know if the last gentleman wanted his speech entered into the minutes.
Respectfully requested to be excused due to his hearing limitations.
Okay. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, we have heard from everybody who's signed up. Again, unless there's somebody in the audience who would like to come forward to provide comments on either side of the issue, whether you're for it or against the petition. Okay. Did we swear you in, sir? We will need to swear him in. Firm him in.
He affirmed, and then stick. If you raise your right hand.
Are there others in the audience who may want to come and speak? We'll need to affirm you as well. Just one more, one more chance for it. Okay.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Is that your solemn affirmation? If you'll just identify yourself and give us your address.
My name is Bill Lee, twenty-six oh five Surrey Lane, Greenville. I've got, you know, just a couple of questions, or maybe just one. I appreciate the fact that the staff found that there was no violation of health and safety. Everybody has stated that there's no toxic chemicals in the solar panels. This may be kind of common sense, boots on the ground, and it may have been addressed, I don't know. Thousand acres, thereabouts, solar farms, solar panels. You know, technologies, I mean, you know, we can all remember, there weren't no computers a long time ago. The slide rule. Fifteen, twenty years. What's the obsolescence factor of the existing solar panels? Where's the expense? Who's going to bear the expense if the company goes under or abandons the thousand acres? I mean, who's going to bear the expense of removing a thousand acres of solar panels? I appreciate the fact that, you know, yeah, they're going to redo them, you know, as technology comes along. Is that in the written agreement with Pitt County? Because I would hate for my children to suffer the indignity of an expense bearing replacement if this company abandoned them, or even if they chose not to. You know, I appreciate, you know, Mr. Watts, and I am a good friend of his, and he is a professional engineer and has worked with, retired from CPNL. And he's got, you know, a lot of data, you know, as we're at eighty kilowatt hours, I mean, solar panels. Well, may I ask the engineer a question?
Sir, can you please, can you indicate that you're living?
I do.
Are you alleging any special damages that this project would suit to remedy?
In the future, yeah, possibly.
Can you provide expertise on how to deal with special damages?
Well, I'm a builder, and I have developed. And I know that many of the citizens of Pitt County, or some of the citizens of Pitt County, are looking to expand and do some developing elsewhere at a later point in time. You know, where is the expense going to be paid? Who's going to pay the cost of replacing those solar panels? I appreciate the fact that we're talking about eighty megahertz or whatever, you know, is it really that? You've got experts? You've got experts? Well, please, I haven't heard anybody say that an eighty megahertz solar, mega whatever, solar farm.
I'll leave you for just a moment. Objection will be noted for the minutes, and it has, and I'd just remind folks to direct their comments to the board and not to individuals, as I had stated in the beginning.
Did she address it to the board through, when she was asking me what my questions?
Yes, sir, through your public statement. But if you'll just conclude your remarks to the board.
I have great concern.
Attorney, I have a question. Is it really proper for her to object like she's doing? I don't remember in all the years I've been a county commissioner, anybody ever doing that on any issue.
It is appropriate, Commissioner Colson. It is not typical and not something that you see in a quasi-judicial hearing such as this, the law does provide for that. We don't typically have attorneys involved in our quasi-judicial hearings, so ours are usually off the animal, but there is the right in a quasi-judicial hearing.
But why is it that she gets her side to be able to present? And then he has, he's got to be faced with, I'm going to say, a combative person? Why didn't he get the chance to say what he wants to say? That makes me suspicious.
He may certainly say what he would like to say. He may also, well, as a, as a, the, depending on the hearing, have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses who are spoken. So the extent this board has questioned any witnesses for cross-examination or to any speaker, he may do that. His time, be given the same amount of time as everyone else to conclude his remarks.
I didn't get to ask, I didn't step up and ask the question when she said, are there any questions? When he said, are there any questions? I apologize. I didn't believe that I was sworn in at the time. But as a citizen of Pitt County, I do have some questions. Whether this moment is the proper time or not, I don't know. But I'm here, and they've got their experts here.
And this is the proper time to share your thoughts?
Well, good, not a problem then. Whether we have to change the pro forma of the meeting or not, but I would like to ask those experts the question I just asked. I put them in front of the commissioners just because I wanted to make sure that y'all were considering the fact that these solar panels are going to be obsolete at some point in time. Who's going to bear that expense of changing them out? Is that in the written agreement somewhere? I don't know. I don't know. You know, is an eighty megawatt-hertz solar panel farm going to produce that much? Solar panels, they only produce power during the day. They don't produce power during, at night or in bad weather, when it's cloudy, it's raining. I'm not against solar panels. Like I said, I'm a builder. I appreciate the fact that, you know, we could take each house off the grid with solar panels at that point. But, you know, I'm not even, you know, it comes to light, you know, you're thinking about the county property tax. Are the solar panels being taxed at the same rate that I'm being taxed for my personal property, on my house, in my personal property? I think, no. Solar farms are not being taxed at that. Are they offered some kind of discount? How much? How much of a discount? Eighty percent? Eighty percent? My wife is a senior financial vice president of a company, a big company in this county. And I don't think that her company gets eighty percent discount. Do you get eighty percent discount on anything on your property? Business? I'm just thinking, you know, and I'm not against solar. I'm not against solar. But a thousand acres? Is it going to produce what they say that it's going to produce? Where are, where are the statistics? Where are the statistics, Mr. Engineer?
If you would.
I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you. Think about it. Think about it.
I just wanted to know the gentleman who could not hear. Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman and County Manager, the gentleman who was going to speak and did get sworn in, was he in favor or against? That's the part that I wanted to know, the one who could not hear. And the speaking, the speaking was a little soft, everyone, but, and he did not hear prior to. And maybe we should have spoken up and said that it was a little soft. But it was, but I'd like to know, was he in favor or was he against the presentation?
Mr. Chairman, not to get off on that, but I wanted to make sure that we are, maybe for the sake of not limiting ourselves to evidence that actually entered into the record. And Mr. Watts did not provide testimony on the record, if I'm not mistaken, Madam Attorney. So I guess that is a fine question, but I think that it's important that we're considering, for the sake of, and for the proper discourse before our board, that we're limiting our inquiry actually before us. And that's, testimony of Mr. Watts is not before this body. And not nothing against any of the witnesses.
Well, it was, it was a very soft-spoken meeting. I guess we hear each other now, and in all due respect for people who are a bit challenged in their physical hearing and speaking, whatever, I don't want to get in a match with you, Mr. Commissioner Nonnelly, but I only asked if his position on the issue was pro or against. And I think that's a fair question. And I like to hear his position on this instance, even though he couldn't hear what was being said. It was soft-spoken, everybody who presented. And he's here, and his time is valuable, and I don't like to see anyone coming to a meeting that I'm sitting in and disrespect it. So is he pro or against? It wasn't a presentation that I'm asking about. I just wanted to know his position.
Can you ask it me?
I don't know. I want to know.
I don't know his position. Don't know his position, but I suppose you could, as a member of the board, you could call him up and ask him that question.
He's been a very, of correspondent with some of us. I know his position, and he's very smart. And his complaints, for someone, someone who's been in the state afterwards, I'm not sure that those are relevant to this position. It seems like the complaint is, we will say, Department has gone through and provided us, it seems like the reasons to approve this is what, excuse me, this is very, very persistent correspondent with some of us and made clear his objections to what is happening with the tax rates and with the usage with Watts and all of this. I don't believe it necessarily, in my purview. And I don't mean to speak for him, but I believe that it was very clear in communications that I received from him. And again, very respectful, very smart, and it seemed quite.
And I would just caution you to base your decision today on the information that's before you in this hearing and this hearing only, which I know you will do.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Okay, if we're going to use your logic, this report can't be considered. We didn't get that until just now. Did you read it in the last so many minutes? I went through it, and I see some things, I see some appraisals, but I'll tell you what I don't see. I see appraisals maybe of adjacent properties. What about the appraisals in the same towns of similar properties that are adjacent? We don't know how much they went up. They may have gone up three times. On top of that, when are we going to, we could ask questions about what they presented. But I got questions about things that we actually did have in front of us, and like the decommission. They're talking about thirty-seven thousand dollars to decommission seven-hundred-and-fifty acres. That's fifty dollars an acre. Anybody believe that it can do that? Fifty dollars an acre? So if there's things like that in here, and then we're going to get things that we didn't even have a chance to review, I don't see how we can do anything about it.
I'm married to a farm owner, and my name is Snell Diddy, to his home place, and it's a lot of this property that is being established for this is sort of around in where our farm is. There have been at least two large public hearings held in Betel, and all property owners that were anywhere in this vicinity were invited. And this report and this request got the blessing of those, all of those people that were there. I don't know what that does as far as voting tonight is concerned, but this is not new information, and it's not that it hasn't been shared with the homeowners because it has. because it has even those who own property that are not being affected at this time. And I will say that many of the farmers wish that they had been affected because, you know, it's, it's a clean type of industry that's not going to interfere with farming and the, you know, processes that are going on, on the farms now.
Mr. Chairman, I just remind you that you're still in your public hearing, and we'll have an opportunity to debate and discuss, um, at the conclusion of your public hearing as well.
Do we have to move the court to close?
I'm sorry?
Um, can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Um, if everybody has had an opportunity to speak, then the chairman would close the public hearing.
Okay, very good. Uh, if there's no further evidence in this, well, I'd like to declare the public hearing closed at this, at this time. Now, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, be, before the vote begins, I would ask the county attorney maybe to discuss, uh, any board members needing to recuse themselves on this matter, possibly?
Yeah. Well, and I'll just, based on your comments, Commissioner Ward, do you have an interest in this property such that you would recuse yourself from the vote? Or are you disinterested in this matter such that you are able to vote?
I'm able to vote because our property is not involved in any way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, in your presentation, James, did you say that this company would be responsible for removing all the equipment within one year after they stopped operation?
Commissioner Watts didn't say that, but actually in our, uh, regulations, it is a requirement that they propose a decommissioning plan, which is part of their supplemental package. So, yes, it is a requirement that that, we're not holding a bond like we might would for subdivision street or, uh, maintenance type deal. But as far as a decommissioning plan, yes, that is part of our arrangements.
To remove all that equipment?
It's actually between, um, the property owners. If we're, we would, um, typically, when we discussed this, to go back a little ways, as far as when these regulations were put in place, um, it was looked at as to whether we would secure a bond or not, because other communities often do. But the materials actually, at that point in time, were shown to, their salvage, um, price was more than it would be the expense to have them removed. So, we did not get any, uh, other types of bonding or anything to go along with that. But the decommissioning plan is part of this package, yes.
Thank you.
Comments at this time? All right, here done. What's the pleasure of the board, please? Yes, ma'am?
Motion that we accept, uh, this conditional use permit request.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, um, inquire as to whether the motion is making all of the requisite findings of fact as set forth in the planning department's PowerPoint as their findings in support of that motion?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grady, has been moving properly. Second, uh, although in favor, let it be known by seeing I, uh, those opposed. Uh, thank the record show. Eyes, hands up, please. Nay, hands up, please.
Thank you.
And that pass, that passes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Um, the, the conditional use is approved.
Okay.
Thank you, and...
Okay, Mr. O'Grady.
Okay, our second case tonight, Mr. Chairman, is with American Materials Company. Again, another conditional use permit.
Do we have to, I'm sorry, do we need to wait for folks to leave and bring in other folks who've been outside? If you could hold that thought for just a second, we'll get the folks from the second hearing in. And thanks, the, thank you to the folks who came on the first hearing.
What have I done?
I hope so.
We need to announce that if the first case continues to be here, and, and if the first goes...
That's one.
Down here. Oh, don't stop. I don't want to piss anybody off. Those, those in the room now should be here for American Materials Company sand mine only.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we will get started on the second case for tonight. And as I alluded to, this is for a sand mine operation. Uh, it's with American Materials Company. It is another conditional use permit. And we've been through these quasi-judicial procedures just, um, before this case. So, with that, we'll skip right to the swearing in of witnesses by the clerk for anyone that signed up.
Okay, Attorney, can read the public addresses of that public hearing comment first.
Please, County, welcome to comments and all members of the public on matters related to this public hearing. Before you speak, please state your name and address prior to beginning your remarks. Remember that comments are to be directed to the board and not to individuals. Please keep all comments respectful. Profanity or personal attacks will not be permitted. Pursuant to the board's rules of procedure, I will keep your time at five minutes per speaker. When you hear the timer indicate that your time is up, please conclude your remarks. Thank you.
So, can you, who would like to stand?
Are you Mr. Azel? Okay, if you would raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Is this your solemn affirmation? Thank you.
Again, tonight's second case is for an expansion of an existing sand mine. And I'll give you the, uh, location in just a minute on a map. But it is, um, property owned by Mr. William Mitchum. Uh, it is located in an area just adjacent to the Tar River on Stokes Road, just off of Old River Road. Um, you may recall, several of you may have been on the board at the time when we issued a conditional use permit back in 2012 for, um, a sand mine operation that was quite large, encompassed about two-hundred-and-thirty-five acres. And remember, there's quite a large buffer that goes along with these, um, operations. So, in turn, only about sixty-seven acres were actually excavated. Uh, what's before you tonight is an expansion to that existing conditional use permit of about fifty acres. And, uh, close to about a third of that will be excavated. And we'll show you maps of that in just a minute. Again, to orient you, this is the Falkland Bridge, right there, uh, coming out of the ETJ of Falkland, across, onto the Belvoir side. And Belvoir's sitting right off the map up here. Uh, this is NC two-twenty-two. This is Old River Road. And right here's the intersection with Stokes Road. The property, as you can see, comes, it fronts on the Stokes Road and also has riverfrontage at the very back. The existing sand mining operation is in this area. And you can also see a smaller portion here that I'll highlight on another map. But basically, the excavation will proceed on, towards the south here into the new property. Here's a comprehensive land use plan. And you can see a large area here is also within the one-hundred-year flood plain. So, needless to say, we were looking at very minimal type of development here. And therefore, that's why it's in the ag, open, natural resource conservation area as far as our land use plan's concerned. Here are your adjacent, um, land uses. Um, as I've mentioned, this entire area here kind of grayed out. This is the existing mining operation, some residential units here, and also some subdivisions along Old River Road and Stokes Road. The county also owns several properties through here that were bought out through the Hazard Mitigation Grant, um, program. Uh, just like with your solar farm, there are a number of conditions that go along with this. They're already cited in our zoning ordinance. Uh, for example, a hundred-foot separation or setback from property lines. Hours of operation only apply if there's blasting involved, since this is a sand mine. That typically is not the case. Screening is required. There's a lot of existing vegetation on this particular site. And of course, there's also a state mining operation that, uh, operating permit that has to be issued by the state. This is a little bit different orientation. So, NC two-twenty-two is up on the top of this now. Here's your intersection with Old River Road. Uh, Stokes Road is kind of coming along this border here. As I showed earlier, the existing mine that you could see on the aerial was around in this area. That is going to extend on further into this vicinity. So, again, the approved site here in 2012, this is your expansion site. And just to blow it up a little bit closer, um, your previous boundary, and again, there were requirements for setbacks, uh, non-excavated area just adjacent to that property line. With the expansion, the proposal is that area will be excavated. So, that's your existing area. That area will also now be included since it's extending across the property line and into the newly proposed conditional use permit area. There's also some buffers associated with this. This happens to be a ridge of sand that runs through there. There's a lot of additional area on this parcel that will be, will remain undisturbed. And you can see all this area is currently wooded and is intended to stay in that way. And again, the Tar River right in this area, right on the back property line. So, uh, similar to our last case, we also go through these various criteria for your consideration tonight. Uh, will it materially, will this sand mine materially endanger the public health and safety? Uh, we do not believe that it will. Uh, this expansion is to an existing mine that's just adjacent to this property. Um, also, it's limited access to this property, especially off Stokes Road. All the access will be provided off NC two-twenty-two. And as I've mentioned, there is a hundred-foot separation and vegetation is required along that area. Will it substantially injure the adjacent property values? We do not believe that it will. Uh, there are a number of other sand mines in this particular area, and there are requirements for setbacks and other requirements, even through the state mining permit. Will it be in harmony with the area? And again, you've seen the extensive setbacks and buffers here. Um, the area predominantly is either in woodland or is agriculturally oriented. And again, we do not see that it will be out of any disharmony with the area. Is it in conformity with plans that have already been approved by the county? We believe that it is. So, we have two motions. Again, Mr. Chairman, the first one is to acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete. The second is to approve with all those development standards listed in our zoning ordinance. We do have a couple of extras. As I've mentioned, this particular site is within the one-hundred-year flood plain, as well as a portion is within the floodway. So, there is a requirement for, uh, a, a letter of map revision in that area through FEMA. Uh, also, a fifty-foot riparian buffer may be required on some of the features that are shown on this particular, um, plan. And that will have to be determined either through our office on-site or by the state. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for our public hearing.
Good. Now, declare the public hearing open. Uh, Madam Attorney, do we have anyone to sign?
James Isel, with American Materials. If you come to the podium, please, please give your name, address.
Good evening. Uh, my name is James Isel. I live at three-ten Tiffany Circle in Garner, North Carolina. Uh, I'm here, uh, representing American Materials. I work with them in their, uh, permitting and, and, uh, mine development process. Um, I'm basically just here to answer any questions that you might have. Um, I was involved in, in the, uh, state permitting process and in the initial design. So, I might be able to provide some more information if you need that.
And now, declare the public hearing closed. Uh, the pleasure of the commission. Has been moving properly. Second, uh, all in favor, but let it be known by raising your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I just cleared five for your... Minutes, since you have to, the requirement to make findings of fact and conclusions that your motion is incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions that were in the PowerPoint presented this evening?
It is.
Thanks. Okay.
All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand again, please. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Eric, go with...
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Um, tonight we do have our last conditional use permit request is from Tyrone, so Pollard. The request is to, oh, where'd it go? And as with the previous, uh, requests, we need to swear on our witnesses for tonight.
Everybody that's been here, no one new has come in. Did you hear the statement? Okay. If you'll stand and raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Is this your solemn affirmation? Thank you.
The request for tonight is for a conditional use permit is to expand... The request for tonight is for a conditional use permit is to expand an existing child daycare center called Creative Learning Daycare Center. It's located in Catherine's Place subdivision at 903 Catherine's Place. Just a little background on this particular use, a permit was originally issued in 2005 to operate a daycare center. That center was in operation until 2013, and that existing building was constructed specifically to be used as a daycare center. Sometime after that, we did amend the zoning ordinance to require conditional use permits for daycare centers. The applicant did obtain a conditional use permit back in 2015 to operate the current center, and the required hours of operation on that use were 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. She is proposing to expand the daycare center by adding a mobile classroom unit, but she's not intending to increase the number of children in the facility. Her environmental health permit limits that number. In this request, since it does constitute what we consider a major modification to that previous conditional use permit, it does require the new application in hearing. So this is the site itself. You see highlighted in the yellow hash mark, it's at the end of Catherine's Place, right off NC 33, right near the intersection of Bear's Construction Road. You see, adjacent to it is actually a landfill, a construction demolition debris landfill, and the rest of the property around it is currently zoned real residential. Comprehensive land use plan does designate it as suburban residential, and you see the existing land uses, it's in a residential subdivision, so that reflects that, as well as some residences along Bear's Construction and Roosevelt Spain Road. As part of the zoning ordinance, the standards for daycare centers include outdoor activity areas have to be enclosed by a security fence. There's hours of operation restrictions on resident, in residential districts, and any outdoor activities are permitted only during daylight hours. This is a site plan that was submitted. You see the property line highlighted in the red dash line. There's several existing buildings on the property, including the existing daycare center. There's already existing drive or existing driveway and parking area, and then the proposed mobile classroom unit will be located behind the existing daycare center. So there's no, since there's no increase in children, there's no increase to a required parking area. So really, all that we're looking at is just the addition of the building. So as James mentioned previously, this is subject to certain criteria. Will it materially endanger the public health or safety? We staff believe it's, since it's an existing child daycare center, it will not materially endanger health or safety. Staff does not find that it will injure the value of any adjoining or budding properties, and will be, and it will be in harmony with the area which is located, because again, it's an existing daycare, and they're just expanding to it currently. And we also find that it will be in conformance with the comprehensive land use plan. So staff does recommend two motions tonight. Again, first to acknowledge that the application is complete, and the second to approve the permit with the following additional condition. And this just reiterates the previous condition that was placed on it to operate only between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. from Monday to Saturday. With that, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to open the public hearing.
And now declare the public hearing open. Those who wish to speak.
Sign up if you'd like to come forward. Back in the comments, you are.
Hello, I'm Tyrone Pollard. I'm the current, the director at Creative Learn Child Care Center, and I basically want to add more additional space to my center for the after-school kids that we currently already have. They're growing bigger, and the current room I have is kind of small. But if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Okay?
And now declare the public hearing closed. What's the pledge of the commission?
Agree the request.
Both motions? Whether motion to approve within a second, has been moved in properly. Second, it'll be approved with both motions. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.
This is of your record that that motion includes the findings of fact and conclusions of law that were set forth in the PowerPoint of the planning department?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Again, raise your right hand, those opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion care. Now this time we move to, now the commission, let's commence. We have start with the commission award.
Thing that I have, I'm going to go back to page 27 of the, of the first project where it had the decommission. I would ask that staff look a little bit closer and don't just accept whatever they put down on a piece of paper and say, hey, this is reasonable. Like I said, $37,000 to decommission 750 acres? That can't be right. Maybe what we ought to do is get the county engineer involved with these things when it comes down to that. That's the only comment I got. I just don't think that's practical.